Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, October 28, 2019. Prior to our call to order and roll call this evening, I would like to remind, as we do each and every meeting, that there are a number of places on this evening's agenda during which any member of the public can participate. One of those places on the agenda is Item D, under Public Participation. At this time, anyone who would like to speak to any item on the agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, to feel free to speak at that time. If you're speaking to an item that is on the agenda, and you prefer to speak at that time, we will be happy to honor that request. So I may, during the course of the meeting, ask you whether or not you'd like to speak during public participation, or during the time when we will be taking that item under consideration. If you would like to speak this evening, I would ask you to kindly fill out a speaker request form. We already have quite a few filled out. They're in the back of the room. Kindly fill those out, give them to our city clerk Lynn Fazekas up here, and Lynn will get those to me. I'll try to get those to, uh, try to get you on in the order, not only that we receive this, but obviously on the order that they are on the agenda. Having said that, I'd like to ask our city clerk Lynn Fazekas to kindly call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Finukin.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Seven present.
This evening, we're very honored to have members of Gideon Court Girl Scout Troop 40111 to lead us in tonight's Pledge of Allegiance. If I may ask those members of Girl Scout Troop 40111 to keep, please come forward.
Tell the colors.
If you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let's give Colleen Rittmeyer, the adult leader and the Girl Scouts, a big hand. Thank you. Great job. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it. Okay, before we approve the agenda tonight, one quick item. You'll notice that we have an empty chair up here. Pat Fagan, our fourth ward alderman, resigned a few weeks ago, and I'm pleased to report that six residents had indicated their interest in the fourth ward aldermanic seat. One was not considered due to the lack of Ward Four residency. I was able to interview the five over the past week. I was impressed with their interest and their good qualifications. I've made my decision, and I will move that person forward to City Council approval and subsequent swearing in at our November 12 meeting. Having said that, I would like to call for a motion to approve the agenda unless there are any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda. So moved. Second. Hearing none, I would entertain the motion by Alderman Finukin, seconded by Alderman Favor, to approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Tonight's agenda is approved as written and as presented. Okay, we have a number of folks who would like to speak tonight. Again, this first item on your agenda, if you have a copy, Item D, you can speak at this time on any item on the agenda, any item not on the agenda, whether or not it is, we have gotten to that point, on the agenda. So our first speaker is Duane Brown. And I would remind folks that we would like you to keep within the three-minute limitation. Three minutes or less. Duane?
Duane Brown, fourth ward. The city of DeKalb is in competition with a city in Wisconsin for a 1.2 million square foot distribution center and a 466,500 square foot packaging center. The food manufacturing and distribution company is considering 106 acres of the 343-acre Chicago West Business Center site. The city, along with the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, is working on a long-term tax abatement with the other taxing districts for property tax, providing financial assistance in looping the water mains, working with the Illinois Department of Transportation for roadway improvements, planning the site layout, utility extensions, and the very important stormwater management, which includes a lot for stormwater retention, and incentives from the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone. I ask the city to please work with the property owner and company to provide as much assistance as possible. We have a central location next to interstate highways, near a railroad hub, an airport with a long runway, affordable housing, excellent police and fire departments, good schools and hospital, parks and bike trails, and a reasonable cost of living. We lost the Toyota Mazda plant for two main reasons. We didn't have a shovel-ready site, and it wasn't a right-to-work state, which we had no control of. I don't want us to lose this opportunity, and also the high-tech business that wants to move in that Chicago West Business Site, too. Let's fight the city of Wisconsin, give all our benefits, and get this to happen. We need the business, we need the additional revenue, we need the growth. That is essential to us, and I hope the council approves it. Thank you.
Thank you, Duane. In the order that we receive these tonight, Ingrid Den Bowden, would you like to speak now, or do you want to wait for the public hearing? You want to wait for the, the public hearing will come up in probably, well, maybe 20 minutes or so?
Maybe now.
You can speak now, or during the public hearing. Right.
Yeah, I'm Ingrid Den Bowden, from 2975 South Fourth Street, right across from the project, and I do have welcomed the Krasinski team to DeKalb and wish them the best. I really only have a couple of things to say. I've got company here from Texas, and I have to go meet them pretty soon. But our two concerns is water and water. The runoff water, which has been a nightmare for years, and it's been going on for two, over 200 years, I'm sure, with the beavers, but you might need that Army Corps of Engineers to do some kind of a tunneling under that bridge, because they're never going to make that bridge any better. And the other concern is, we're all on wells. So hopefully, this will have no impact on our wells. And I did bring a well report along, and I'd like to leave it for the city. They can keep it for their records. But one funny moment was 20 years ago. We had this wet, soggy yard, and the water wasn't going anywhere, and my husband couldn't find me. And he ended up finding me down by the Beaver Dam with a pitchfork. So it's been there forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Ingrid. Appreciate it. Next person, Mark Sharvat.
Most of the citizens of DeKalb received their water bills just recently, and now that we have billing six times a year as opposed to four times a year, you get to see it more often. Interestingly enough, a lot of people have brought up the fact their water bills have increased dramatically. Now, I'm aware that we have an annual increase every year in the month of July, but so many people I've talked to are just shocked at the amount of money they're paying to the city in the latest water billing. I think, and this was brought up at Carolyn's Ward Meeting just recently, I think we need to review our annual increase in the water bill, because it's well beyond the cost of inflation right now. And this summer, I don't know about you guys, but I think we got a lot more rain than we did in the past, so I didn't use much more in the way of water. The other problem is, I don't know why, if there's something we can do about this, our water bills are billed in units, single numbers, like four or five. No decimal points, no fractions. So you either have four units, five units, or six units, not 4.1, 4.2. So your last billing, if you're at 4.9 on the billing that hit in July, you went to five units. So we need, I don't know if we can get some sort of other system in place where we have an exact measure of units, maybe in the hundreds or thousands. Let's get a little more accurate read, because the integers we're using, it's not exactly a good way to do it. I also want to comment on FOIA. We are still not publishing all the fulfilled Freedom of Information Act requests information on our website. We selectively publish FOIA fulfillments, but not all of them. Our previous acting city manager was starting to work on this process, and when our new city manager took over, the process kind of got derailed as far as getting everything out there. The city now picks and chooses exactly what is published on its FOIA archive portal. I'd like to see that fixed. At the committee of the whole meeting tonight, you discussed the tax levy, and I just want to verify that the numbers, because I was hearing two different reports, one in the newspaper and one that was brought forward at the meeting tonight, are we actually, actually lowering the levy by 3.5% or the rate by 4%? I'm not sure. Across the board, across the entire township, everybody's tax levy, just about every property, unless you appeal it, is going up by 3.5%. So if you leave the levy rate where it's at, everybody gets a 3.5% tax increase automatically. One other comment, fourth ward, I hope the mayor appoints somebody who's going to be responsive to the community. Our previous fourth ward alderman unfortunately had a lot of business interests and was unable to vote on a lot of issues that came before the fourth ward. I think it's important that we have someone in there who can participate in the discussion, have ward meetings, and not be sidetracked by personal interests that affect his bottom line, hence he had to, he was not able to vote on most of the items. Finally, Finance Advisory Committee, I'm glad they finally met. I agree with Chairman Peddles' comments that the Finance Advisory Committee should have been meeting more often. Last year, we set a great precedence. We started the FAC back in February. I know our FAC liaison, Mike, you didn't attend any meetings other than the big meeting we had in June, which wasn't really a Finance Advisory Committee meeting. The committee needs to meet and starts, needs to start that process in the beginning of the year, so the citizens can be properly served. It's a valuable committee this city has. Let's use them, and let's not wait until October before the Finance Advisory Committee meets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, next up, Kathy Cavisto, would you like to speak now, or wait until the public hearing?
Now. Kathy Cavisto, 3275 South Fourth Street. My concern is with the Krasinski Project, as my driveway is the closest to Gurler Road. I know last Wednesday he assured us that any road expansion would be going on his property, but when I spoke with IDOT, and state funding has been requested, IDOT told me that if state funding goes through, they can take my front yard. A turn lane is 130 feet. That's right up to my driveway. I'm very concerned with road expansion with the Krasinski Project and my property value. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Now, I am going to assume that the remainder of those who have indicated a desire to speak to us this evening, that you would like to wait until we get to that item on the agenda. I am going to, what, I see, what are your names? Did you fill out a speaker request form?
Someone for a leak.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. And Robert, you'd like to speak now, as opposed to waiting, until we get to that item on the agenda?
Yeah, I need to pick up my.
Okay, come on in. I'm sorry, I didn't have that here, so.
Forgive my nervousness, this is my first time addressing the city council.
Don't be nervous.
Yeah. Rob Feldacker from Seven Miller Court in the fifth ward. I'd like to speak to ordinance 69 about the adult use of cannabis in DeKalb. I'd like to express my appreciation to the council and to city manager Nicholas for coming up with what I generally think is a very balanced ordinance, and I want to support it. And when Illinois legalized cannabis, I thought it would be a good opportunity for DeKalb to attract that kind of business and to capitalize with a sales tax and bring in some much-needed revenue and fill in some empty storefronts. In general, I'm very much in favor of this ordinance. I did want to bring the council's attention to one particular problem that I thought, and that is Measure N, or, which forbids, prohibits adult-use craft growers, cultivation centers, infusers, processors, transporters, and medical cannabis cultivation centers. Dispensaries, I think, are going to be a very useful part of our local economy, but I think we need to think long-term. Many people here, I think, get medical prescriptions through online ordering services from anywhere, so the future of any dispensary may be limited. I don't think DeKalb should limit the kind of cannabis businesses that it's willing to attract. We want the kind of businesses that aren't going to be put out of business by Amazon or a prescription service two weeks after they open. Thank you very much for your attention.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Okay, assuming no one else would like to speak at, your name? Jared?
Jake.
Jake DeSilva. Okay, good. Please.
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to briefly speak about this. I echo, I'm Jake DeSilva. I moved here in August from Ohio. Glad to be here in a resident DeKalb. I echo many of the sentiments of the speaker before me, Rob Feldacker. I support this, this resolution regarding adult-use cannabis. I do not use cannabis. I don't use any drugs. I don't smoke or drink. I don't even use caffeine. But I think this is a growth industry that can really help our economy, and I also agree with the previous speaker regarding Section N. I think that that could really limit the entrepreneurial spirit of residents here and people who can expand this industry and stimulate our economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion of getting you guys up early as opposed to, or asking you if you'd want to wait. Now, having said that, anybody else would like to speak now, or would you like to wait till our portion of the agenda during which we will then have your public participation? Okay, good. Thank you. So we move along to Item E on the agenda tonight. That's Presentations, and I'd like to ask city manager Nicholas and interim police chief Petragallo to speak to this item. That's the promotion, a very proud promotion of Ryan Wilkins to Police Sergeant. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. With the recent retirement of Sergeant Jim Hacker, we're happy to announce the promotion of Sergeant Ryan Wilkins, and with him tonight up here is his wife Kelly. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Ryan and how we grew up. Ryan's originally from Schaumburg, where he grew up with his parents, Kevin and Tina, who are in the audience tonight. Also in the audience are his grandparents, Marie and Ernie. So we're happy that you were able to be here tonight with us. Ryan graduated from Connet High School in Hoffman Estates and went on to attend Western Illinois University, where he studied law enforcement administration and justice. Ryan was initially hired by the Glen Ellen Police Department, where he first met Assistant City Manager Ray Munch, who has also employed there, been working as a police officer. Ryan spent about three and a half years with Glen Ellen Police Department. In 2011, he was hired on with the DeKalb Police Department. While here, he's been a very productive team player on our police force. In addition to his patrol duties, Ryan has served as a field training officer, a range instructor, and as a member of our countywide special operations team, which handles critical incidents throughout the county. Ryan is highly motivated, he's intelligent, and he's a driven police officer, and he's a welcome addition to our supervisory staff. So we're glad to have you. I'd like to invite the clerk up to administer the oath.
Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I am Ryan Wilkins.
I am Ryan Wilkins.
Having been appointed to the position of Police Sergeant.
Having been appointed to the position of Police Sergeant.
In the city of DeKalb.
In the city of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Police Sergeant.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Police Sergeant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
That's it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's give our new Police Sergeant another round of applause. Okay, we have another presentation tonight, and that's the Kishawaki YMCA Camp Power FY 2019 Human Services Funding Report by its development director, Sheridan Ernst. Sheridan, hi.
Hi. Other people might know me as the new Debbie Madley, just to let everybody know.
What's that?
I might be known as the new Debbie Madley.
Oh, right, okay.
I am here to present very good news from Camp Power. I put together some photos, so you guys can enjoy those, because I think those are the, the smiles on the kids' faces that speaks volumes. We served over 110 children this summer, which is an increase from 2018. I first want to say thank you to City of DeKalb, the Police Department of DeKalb, and all of our partners. So it's NIU, VAC, DeKalb Park District, Northwestern Medicine, University Village, Adventure Works, DeKalb County Community Gardens, Girl Scouts, DeKalb Public Library, and DeKalb County Regional Office of Education. So it is a group effort. I am representing the YMCA, but it takes many, many, many people to put on Camp Power, so we are thankful for everybody involved. So we had a few new initiatives this year. We really tried to focus on healthy eating. This is something that kids might not be presented with on a daily basis, so we want to do a lot of educational push with that. And we showed 90%, or 76% of camper, campers ate more fruits and vegetables when they went home, and they chose the right, instead of a bag of chips, they chose an apple, which is always a good thing. In 2018, there is a 16% reduction in crime. I think everybody, we're still kind of pulling all those numbers for this year, and I think it's going to be at the end of the year that we'll be able to pull all of the numbers together. But this year, we also had a lot of field trips, so we had our, I think it's an annual thing that they put on. Again, this is my first year on the job, but it was a fishing trip derby to the NIU Lagoon, which I hope to go on next year. I'm just saying, if anybody knows anybody. And they also got to do a lot of fun activities with the athletes at NIU, and they got to be on the field with soccer players, football players, cheerleader leaders. It was great for these kids to be part of the action, to see their ability and active lifestyle. 90% of campers did activities at camp that they would not normally do, which, again, is huge in this community. We want to make sure every single child is getting new opportunities for growth and development. And with lunches, VAC has been such a great partner. We have served over 2,000 lunches this summer and over 1,700 snacks, so we kept these children very full, but they burned it off daily with all the activities. And camp ran about June 10 through August 2. We did lose a week of camp, thanks to that nasty winter that we had. And they also got to go to animal shelters. We had a counselor-in-trainings program that we did this year, which was very successful. And of course, the visits from police, fire departments, that was always very encouraging to these kids, and building relationships with police, with firemen, where they're friends. They're not supposed to be feared. They're good people. And these kids got to experience fun activities all summer long. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Any comments? You know, we are so proud of so many of the programs for kids in town during, during the year, and every, each and every year, and to have this particular one and working in tandem with our police department, it's just, and the YMCA and others, it's just, it's great. And to see these kids, many of whom perhaps had, did not, would not have access to these activities, would not have access to the fresh food and the snacks, et cetera, just wonderful. Thank you very much.
And it's all free.
Great.
So if anybody's not familiar with it, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving right along, Item F on the agenda. There are no appointments this evening. Now we move to our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion, unless a council member asks that any item that you see printed here be removed from the consent agenda. Do I have any requests for any of the items removed, to be removed? If not, I would like to read each of the following titles, and then we will vote in one motion, after one motion in a second. The items on tonight's consent agenda, number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of October 14, 2019. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through October 28, 2019, in the amount of Number three, investment and bank balance summary through August 2019. Number four, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through August 2019. Number five, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, September 2019. And FY two, number six, FY 2019 Human Services Funding Third Quarter Report. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
It's removed by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
And FY, number six, FY 2019 Human Services Funding Third Quarter Report. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move to the second.
It's removed by Alderman McAdams, submitted by Alderman Verbic. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
The consent agenda is approved as presented. We move along now to H, a public hearing. I will open this public hearing regarding a First Amendment to an annexation agreement for the property located between Route 23, Gerler Road, Kriggo Road, and I-88, DeKalb 343 LLC. I open this public hearing at 6:30 PM. Prior to City Manager Nicholas making any preparatory remarks, which may add to his printed background, there are a number of folks who would like to speak to this item during public hearing. The first, Jerry Krasinski.
Good evening. Jerry Krasinski here on behalf of Chicago West Business Center. I reside at 1971 Shenandoah Lane in St. Charles, Illinois. I want to thank everybody, certainly council, staff. For several years, we've been working with the community here to finally develop an opportunity at the Chicago West Business Center. Fact of the matter is, we felt very strongly about this area and purchased 343 acres back in 2005, and I believe we formally annexed the property in 2006. We've worked very closely with DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation and several others, and have pursued several opportunities for years to bring a good resident and client to the business park. And we also wanted to be a very good neighbor. At the time that we developed our annexation in 2006, we set very high standards as it related to development guidelines, the layout, dealing with detention, traffic, and all of the things that we've discussed in detail at the Planning and Zoning Commission a few weeks ago. We finally have a great opportunity to bring a potential prospect into the neighborhood that would provide a variety of employment opportunities, not only warehouse and distribution, but packaging and some other business activities with some future growth in the coming years. And so that's why we're here requesting an amendment to our annexation agreement. So I would like to thank everybody and reassure the city that we will continue with the same high standards that we developed very early on with our annexation agreement. And we look forward to hopefully attracting this great company to DeKalb and making a formal announcement in the future. So if any questions, or should I basically part at this point?
You're going to stick around.
I'm staying.
Yeah, so we have some other folks who would like to comment. I know Bill would like to make a few comments. And of course, we'll be voting on this in just a short time, so.
If I need to come back up, I'll be glad to.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Paul Borick.
Good evening, Mayor Smith and City Council members. Thank you very much for your leadership and deliberations on behalf of the City of DeKalb. The DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation is a public-private partnership working to facilitate sustainable and diversified economic growth in DeKalb County. Our membership includes 200 private businesses, institutions, and individuals, the City of DeKalb, DeKalb County, and other county municipalities, together with school districts and other taxing bodies. DCEDC's efforts to expand and diversify the economy focus on business attraction and expansion, enhancing the business climate, marketing and promotion, workforce development, and strengthening the public-private partnership critical to effective business attraction and expansion. In fulfillment of this mission, I encourage the DeKalb City Council to approve the amendment to the annexation agreement requested by DeKalb 343 LLC, the Chicago West Business Center. The property has been planned for office research and industrial since 2006, or 2000, since 2005 in the city's comprehensive plan. The property has been zoned planned development since 2006, and food processing, distribution, and packaging are allowed uses in the planned development industrial district. Furthermore, the local economy needs to expand to diversify the tax base with business and industry in order to reduce the individual tax burden on residents. DCEDC and the City of DeKalb have targeted industrial development to provide for needed growth. The City of DeKalb and DeKalb County have the assets and resources to attract research and development, advanced manufacturing, and efficient logistics to create and produce innovative products for distribution to national and international marketplaces. Food processing industries will complement and can partner with Northern Illinois University's Planned Northern Illinois Center for Community Sustainability. The center's focus is on research and development, partnerships with business and industry, addressing food systems, water resources, the environment, and climate change. DCEDC has worked with the Chicago Business Center and the City of DeKalb for more than a dozen years to market the site extensively to attract highly capable and productive industries. A significant new employer like the one under consideration can generate demand for new homes to help jumpstart the local housing market. New housing development is important to balanced and sustainable growth by providing housing stock for workforce recruitment, also for professionals, and for young families, while increasing wages and salaries to support demand for retail products, commercial services, and institutional services. For these reasons, we request your full support of the proposed amendments. And following me, DCEDC Board Member and past President Paul Calligan has requested the opportunity to share his perspective with you. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Paul. And now Paul Calligan. Paul and Paul.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Paul Calligan. I live at 1512 Creighton Circle East in DeKalb, and I am here to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance amendments for the property of DeKalb 343 LLC, represented by Jerry Krasinski and referred to as the Chicago West Business Center. I am very familiar with the property that is subject of tonight's hearing. Prior to my retirement in 2015 from a management career with ComEd, I was involved with projects that saw significant investments in infrastructure reinforcement affecting these parcels. I frequently worked out of the local ComEd office, which is located just south of this area at Kestlinger Road, and saw signs promoting the development of this site. And through my participation in activities with the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, I observed firsthand the enthusiastic efforts put forth by Jerry Krasinski to market this property for a major quality economic development project. Jerry Krasinski is making a major commitment to attract a specific client to the Chicago West Business Center by initiating grading of the site along with stormwater management. Water from the site will eventually be directed to a large detention pond on the northwest corner of the property, and there will be a controlled release of water rather than the random runoff that currently occurs. Mr. Krasinski has also invested in engineering, soils, geotechnical, and environmental due diligence to ensure a large-scale industrial development can be accommodated on the site. This includes detailed studies to help the city and state upgrade surrounding roads to appropriately accommodate changes in traffic patterns. The types of development proposed for this site will positively influence the DeKalb economy with advanced manufacturing, state-of-the-art logistics, and innovative research and development operations. Business attraction and expansion is a complex undertaking with intense competition from cities, counties, states, and even other countries. Each year, DCEDC prepares more than 30 detailed proposals and presentations to site selectors, developers, and corporate executives, addressing numerous specific requirements for land, transportation, utilities, labor, supplier industries, operating costs, and incentives. Very few are of the magnitude and get to the level of interest like this project. A marketing concept for undeveloped parcels of property almost always needs to be tailored to the specific requirements of a client. It is not unusual for a developer to advise a conceptual plan and submit amendments like those before you today. The wide-scale prospect considering the Chicago West Business Park has also indicated an aggressive timeline for initial operations. Your decisive and expeditious leadership to fully support this effort by the votes requested of you tonight can bring transformational change to our economy and increasing prosperity for the City of DeKalb and DeKalb County. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Paul. Next speaking during this public hearing is Steve Capitan.
Thank you, Mayor. The proposed distribution and packing facilities will be a welcome member of our business community. I do have a concern, though, that the public and the council has not had a sufficient opportunity to consider the full implications and impacts of the proposed amendment to the original annexation. Annexation agreements are permanent commitments to property owners, as they in turn are making an investment in our community. As such, the process requires public notice, public hearings, plan commission, city council, supermajority vote by the city council, and a first and second reading of the ordinance. All of what I've just read, except for the property owners nearby, has taken place in the last five days. And that is part of my concern. Not the concept or the proposal, but that we have to be very careful that any changes to the annexation agreement should have those kind of deliberations. There are several references to the existing plan approved in 2006. But this plan and plan has not been presented to the public, or as far as I know, to the city council in order to make a comparison of the original with the amended. And I, no graphical representation of that in order to make that comparison. The narrative can get very confusing because it's referring to the original and the amendment, and there's no graphical representation to make the comparison. That is not creating clarity. I have a few concerns about the ordinance. Whether I have time to go into this, maybe I could go into it in the covering the ordinance, but I'd like to start with one. Under this ordinance, the proposed amendment, will it come back? Well, the applicant intends to come back and propose amendments for the entire 343-acre site at a later time, as additional users come forward. Under this ordinance, will these proposed amendments come back to the city council or to staff? Because it references, the applicant is requesting the submitted site plan for the distribution facility and packing center be approved as a preliminary plan and the final plans to be approved by staff. I'll carry the rest of it to the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. John Conlon. I see John here, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me get my stuff arranged here.
Sure.
First of all, I guess, my name is John Conlon, 3155 South 4th Street, DeKalb. I've been a resident in that neighborhood for 41 years, which is right across the street from the Krasinski Project 343. Excuse me. Just to echo a little bit on what Mr. Capitan just said, I also am very concerned about some of the future developments as this process goes forward. From what I read tonight in the backup material, the plan is that they'll come back when future developments may necessitate other amendment changes. And I, like Mr. Capitan, hopefully that's going to come before you and us as neighbors. So he can't just inadvertently change the process and put up something that we're all not quite aware of. So I just want to get that up there, out there. So I would like to see what this thing's going to look like when it's fully built out as he presents today. I see a lot of spaces and buildings, and I don't see any road improvements. I don't, the ponds I wonder about. You know, today, if you were going to go out there and dig a retention pond, you wouldn't have to go far down, you would hit the water table. So I don't know what kind of storage capacity he's going to have in these ponds. I don't know what the release rate's going to be. All that stuff needs to be thought out. Hopefully, I understand you've got engineers working on it, and I hope they all agree on what can happen. But as the drainage comes out, goes into the, excuse my language, the piss-poor drainage that the IDOT has along Route 23 right now, I'm still ponding water in my ditch in front of my house, and across the street, we're still ponding water in the ditch. And as it travels west, underneath the railroad tracks, we're ponding water. Excuse me, I got a bit of a cold. And the further west you go in behind the Veterans Memorial Park there, that's nothing but a lake, and that's owned by the park district, and that's pond water. It's got beaver dams dug all over the place. And then it's open dish drainage from that point all the way to the Kishawaki River, which is going to flow north through DeKalb. So eventually, I saw pumps out this weekend around DeKalb pumping water. That's not going to help the situation any. So drainage is a big, big, big deal. And it has to be looked at very seriously. The other thing we're very concerned about is the traffic, the additional traffic that's going to be traveling Highway 23 to get to these areas of employment. We're seeing almost 800 employee visitor parking spaces for the two buildings that they're putting up, or planning to put up now. And probably that many more for the future building. So we're going to have to have some sort of traffic control out there. Speed limit reductions. IDOT may want to widen the road to facilitate left, right-hand turns. Excuse me, I'll cut this short. You've got one of my neighbors here that says she lives closest to Gerler Road. She may not be able to get out her driveway. And most of us may not be able to get out and make a left-hand turn ever again because of the traffic. So we just need to consider that. I'd also like to know what the building heights are going to be from the proposed building pad elevations that I'm going to have to look at, and most of our neighbors are, what the brims are going to look like. Now, Mr. Krasinski told us that any right-of-way that needs to be taken for any improvements along 23 would be done on the east side. But I don't think he's got the final say on that. IDOT will have the final say on what they do with their road and right-of-way. IDOT, IDOT will have the final say on what they do with their road and right-of-way. So I still refer to this area as Area 51 because we still don't know what's going on over there. And since August, we've seen all this happen, and we didn't get any notice about anything until the 4th of October of this year. So I know Mr. Krasinski says he's talked to all the neighbors, he's working with the neighbors, but I think the only neighbors he's talking to is the ones he's trying to buy property from or go into business with. Because he hasn't talked to any of the residents that I'm aware of along 23. Certainly hasn't talked to me. So I, I just, I just ask you to be very, very vigilant in, in what's happening out here. It'd be great to have a business that's going to employ 1,000 people. I'm not going to take that away. I would love to see it happen. But also, I'm concerned about what kind of a job opportunity these 1,000 people are going to have. Are they working for minimum wage? Mr. Borick said that they're going to be able to buy new housing, or it could affect new housing markets. That'd be great, as long as it's new housing and not affordable housing. So all that needs to be taken into consideration. And I, I just hope that the council and our staff takes the time to really dig into this and make sure that we get what we think we're going to get. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Now, those are the folks who have indicated a interest in speaking to this item during our public hearing. I would like to ask our city manager, Bill Nicholas, to make any additional comments that he may, and then we'll, we'll see if anyone else would like to speak.
Mayor, I'll reserve my comments to the action item, which comes later on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I will close this public hearing at 6:52. We now move to considerations, item I on the agenda. Number one, consideration of a draft schedule for the council's review of the FY 2020 city budget. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you are, some suggested dates for consideration of the draft budget that will ultimately, with your approval, become the fiscal year 2020 budget for the city of DeKalb. Want to draw your attention to one thing in particular. I think from the conversation I had just before the meeting tonight, you may want to review this a bit. But we've proposed a, a back-to-back series of special council meetings for a very intense, page-by-page, fund-by-fund, department-by-department review on Monday, November 18th, and Tuesday, the 19th. This is a refreshing approach that was, has been used elsewhere. I participated in it. Really engages the, all the thinking and, and the energy of, of the elected body as we go through. No stones unturned. But I understand there are some conflicts on Tuesday night, the 19th, relating to something, I believe it's a football game at NIU. And so as you look at this list, that's something you might want to take into consideration. We propose this for your consideration. Obviously, there are some highlights we have to hit every year. We'll have a truth in taxation hearing, a budget hearing, first reading, and on separate occasion, a second reading. And we have to file our budget by December 31st, so we've got a little over two months to do a lot of work, and we're eager to dig in with you. And I'd like to hear your thoughts on the proposed schedule.
So I would like to hear some thoughts on that. I did understand that, you know, we shouldn't have a problem with the November 12th meeting on the truth in, in taxation hearing. On November 18, 19, there seemed to be good buy-in from our finance advisory committee that those back-to-back meetings would, would, at that point at least, seem to be okay. But yes, there is an NIU football game, I think, on the 19th, which is that Tuesday evening. So are there any thoughts, one way or the other, as it relates to this council getting together with the finance advisory committee for those, for those meetings? Alderman Fanouken.
Could we, instead of on Tuesday night, the 19th, could we meet on Wednesday night, the 20th? I understand that there had been planned a, planning and zoning meeting, but as I understand it, this time, that agenda is empty, and that we could use that, this space at that time.
Okay. So Bill's suggestion is that we would go an 1820, November 18 and November 20 meeting. Dan, is what Bill says correct? There is no planning and zoning agenda scheduled for the 20th of November?
That's correct.
Okay. How would that work? City council?
Yep.
Monday night, the 18th, Wednesday night, November 20th? And that would be, what, what time, what kind of a start would that be? Do we know?
I'm thinking earlier than seven, so probably six.
Yeah, six o'clock. Would that be something that might work?
Yeah.
Okay. So Bill, why don't we, we get that word then out to the finance advisory committee that November 18 and 20 would probably work best for that, for that, for that meeting in tandem, if you will?
Will do.
That make sense? Okay, we, you don't need, you got consensus here, that's all you need on this consideration. Moving along, number two, consideration of a waiver of city impact fees for attached single-family townhomes in the Weinberry subdivision. I do have an individual who would like to speak to this prior to city manager Nicholas' background item, and that's Jared Crosslow. Crosslow?
Crosslow.
Good. Welcome.
This is my first time speaking at a city council meeting. Jared Crosslow, 332 Kingsbury Drive in DeKalb. I currently have three lots, vacant lots in the Weinberry subdivision under contract, and I'm exploring developing some townhomes in that, in that development. These lots have been vacant for over 10 years, and there's a, there's an existing ordinance that was passed July 2017, ordinance 2017-32, that offered the waiver of impact fees for 100 new, new constructions. And it did list Weinberry as one of the subdivisions. Weinberry is, is only attached, single-family homes, and I'm just asking for consideration for that to include attached, single-family homes when there was 100 waived, waived fees.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Jared, yes. That was in our background material that had been provided to city council. City manager Nicholas, you want to add anything to that?
Only if Mr. Crosslow is done.
I'm done, yes.
Okay. Yes, as Jared explained, Weinberry subdivision is, is in that list. I did point out in my background as well that there are a few other areas that are zoned for townhouse projects, ones in the South Point Greens and others in the River Mist subdivision. So you might, as you mull this tonight, consider expanding basically his consideration to include those subdivisions as well. To date, as of last Thursday, anyway, the number of waivers that have been issued totaled 28. So we've been making only very gradual progress toward that 100 threshold. So if it would stimulate some new construction for fee simple sales of homes to families or, or others, then I think that's a plus for our community.
Other than the lack of the revenue that you would not receive because of the waiver, and this council was pretty clear in 2017, was it 2017, that we wanted to waive those to embark upon a new building, other than that, there would be no downside to, to having some consensus on moving forward with this, would there?
Yeah.
Alderman Fanouken?
No, I don't see a downside, but I do have a question for city manager Nicholas. So are you looking to include this waiver for the three named subdivisions in your backup or in every subdivision that's listed in the original ordinance?
The question I had, I considered that. I was just looking at those areas that we know is already zoned and final-platted for townhouse development. There are some other areas, yes. It's your choice.
Okay, well then, since these areas are the only ones platted for that, that I'd say that that's what we go ahead and leave it at. But I think that, I'm looking at everybody down there shaking their heads, that I think that you find this council agreeable to waiving those fees at this time.
So those fees would be waived then in those platted subdivisions, Weinberry, South Point, and River Mist. Is that correct?
That's the proposal before you tonight.
Is there any opposition to that? Any downside anyone sees? Can we share consensus positively with our city manager?
In that event, I will bring something back at the next regular meeting in form of an ordinance to officially amend the other ordinance.
Yeah, we need to do that. Good.
Thank you.
Okay. We have one more consideration tonight before we move on to resolutions, and that's consideration of an additional video gaming liquor license to address an unforeseen and unintended conflict between petitioners. And we have a couple of folks who would like to speak to this item. No, just one, folks, and that's Pat McLean. Pat?
I don't think I need to speak on this. Mayor, I think Bill has all the information and stuff gathered up for what we're trying to do here, and hopefully it all works out.
Okay, and we have that background, yes. So with that, thank you, Pat. City manager Nicholas, if you'd sort of explain what this unforeseen and potential conflict is.
Right. So the first rule of good government is do no harm. There was no harm intended here, but there could be some harm if we didn't make an adjustment. I've suggested a way to deal with this. The problem that posed itself to us a couple of weeks ago was the fact that we had a couple of contenders, if you don't mind that word, for the 10th gaming license. And both were operating on parallel tracks, doing different pieces of what needed to be done, and both presented themselves at about the same time. And we didn't have any published criteria where we could say, nope, you weren't the first in my door, so you are going to have to wait. And that, that is something we need to consider, and I've asked that, you've basically tasked me to come up with some, some process that would be fair so we don't get into the situation again. But here we are with a dilemma. One is going to get to the starting gate faster than the other, probably. They're not going to arrive on the same agenda, I hope it's possible, they could. And we have a limit of 10. What I'm asking for is to raise the limit by one to 11 until such time as one of the existing should decide not to continue. And that is not beyond imagination because this happened a couple of times in the last two years. So I'm confident, or let's say I'm speculating, of course, but I'm believing that that may happen again. And when it does, we, the proposal before you is to go back to 10. And then we can, in the meantime, we will have addressed this unforeseen issue. We'll have a couple of people in business as they've been working toward for a while.
I thought your background information was, was excellent, in terms of, of what it was that led to your rather unique solution, and that is to amend this code for one additional license until one of the existing licenses may, through attrition or whatever, cease to be. But I'd like to see some council discussion on this. Alderman, favor.
We've already spoke a little bit, as very public, that I'm not in favor of video gambling. However, in order to be business-friendly, what, I guess, what types of things are we looking at in terms of, are we, like a 90-day, if, if you don't have your documents and you're not into the planning and zoning within 90 days from the issue of permit? Or, you know, there's, is that what we're thinking, some sort of a timeframe?
Right, it is. It is. And when I come back, we'll need some type of an ordinance here. We'll come back at the next regular meeting, and I'll have a little more detail for you, but that's exactly what I'm thinking about. So the, if we were to do this, and, and let's say another one opens up, or we go back to 10, and then who knows what, but, so this won't happen again. We'll have a time period that is sensible, it allows for public hearings, it goes to plan commission and to the council. Also gives time, if there's architectural work to do, for that to be done. And we'll, we have the experience of, of the people who have been applicants before to work from, and we'll also ask around and see what others have done.
Yeah, and I think it might, as you said, it might be requiring some architectural work or something, so maybe there's a 90-day to get the, you know, you come, you get your permit, then there's, you know, maybe some other work that's done, but it's still progressing, whereas, you know, it seems this is stalled out.
Right. And as long as it's progressing under that assumption, then up to a certain point, that the, the one contender is going to have a green light, and if they should fail or retire from the competition, then that other, if there's somebody else in the wings, then they get their crack. And that may extend it out, but there's a possibility, there's an open door then, it can happen, and, and you don't have to wonder what else is happening as you go to bed at night. I've just spent a couple thousand dollars on an architect, and maybe somebody will file with Dan Olson tomorrow, and he beat me to it, you know? What do you do then? So.
Very good. Thank you.
Alderman Morris?
I'm struggling to hear you guys down here, just so you know. I'm not sure if it's just the, you know, heat that's on, but I wonder if people are having trouble hearing in the back as well. I don't know if the mics are down a little lower than usual or what, but just, but I kind of caught it, but I'm just saying, as we move forward.
Any other comments?
Yeah, but as you speak a little more softly, then I start to miss parts of it.
Well, sometimes I even have a difficult time hearing you and even seeing you as I look at your lips, you know, and see what you're saying, so.
Yeah, I think I, my mic doesn't seem to be as loud today either, so maybe we're all down a little bit.
I think sometimes we just have to speak closer into the mic, you know?
Yes, I'll speak up as well.
Any other comments regarding this consideration? City manager Nicholas's option seem to make sense to everyone? Okay, good. Bill, you have consensus.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move to item J under our agenda this evening. Resolutions. Resolution 2019-145, authorizing the sale of real property located at 822 East Lincoln Highway, PIN 08-23-336-006, in the amount of $12,500. Motion, please.
So moved.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Morris. Let's see, no one wants to speak to that item. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a parcel that we have offered at $12,500. We have an offer from Kelly Deal, who is interested in, in working with us to see what he can do on that lot, and may be also interested in the adjacent property. So obviously, we'd have to conform to the city zoning and building requirements.
This will be the fourth or fifth property now that we've been able to, to sell and market over the last six weeks or so. That's good. Any comments on this particular motion and second? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion carries. That resolution is approved. Number two, Resolution 2019-146, amending the property tax abatement qualifying criteria and definitions in the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone. Motion, please.
So moved. Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Adams. Prior to city manager Nicholas having any comments on this, Paul Borick would like to speak to this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. I, as executive director of the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, I also serve as enterprise zone administrator on behalf of the enterprise zone under contract with DeKalb County Government, the lead authority associated with the enterprise zone in partnership with the six municipalities. I just wanted to say I was here to answer any questions, if there were any.
Okay, great. Bill, would you like to make a few comments, and then we'll open up to any questions of either you or- And then we'll open up to any questions of either you or Paul Borick.
Sure, the background, I think, addressed the essentials. And specifically, we're looking to slightly broaden the definition of knowledge-based companies to include data centers. And we're looking to add NIU research parks to be developed on the West Campus is also eligible. That's something that NIU has wanted since the first passage of this Enterprise Zone program. And so we strongly support your, or ask your support for this amendment.
Yeah, this certainly makes sense. Any questions of either City Manager Nicholas or Mr. Borick from DCEDC? If not, roll call.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven I?
That motion carries. Resolution is approved. Number three, Resolution 2019-147, authorizing a waiver of competitive bidding and payment to Foster &amp; Foster Incorporated in the amount of $20,062 for fiscal year 2019 actuarial services. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Faver. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The services of our professional actuary not only relate to our fire and police pension funds, but also to our city's retiree health insurance plan. This is a, they're currently in a multi-year contract. When the contract was first entered, we did not anticipate that the escalator, the annual escalator of the percentage increase would put the, this year's contract over $20,000 by $61.31. I only have your authority to spend up to $20,000. So we're asking your permission to proceed with this last year in the contract.
Actually, $61.31.
I thought I said $61.
$62, yes, $20,006.2. I was just looking at your background information, Bill, so. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven I?
Motion carries. That resolution is approved. Now we move to item K on the agenda, ordinances, second reading. We have no second readings up for vote tonight. Now we move to L, ordinances, first reading. Ordinance 2019-069, amending Chapter 23, Unified Development Ordinance, Article 5, Zoning District Regulations, and Article 7, Supplementary District Regulations of the City of DeKalb, Illinois Municipal Code as it pertains to adult-use cannabis. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Verbic. We do have, several people spoke to this early on. We have one person who would prefer that they speak now, and that's Steve Capitan.
I'll be brief, Mayor. It seems inconsistent for the City Council to be approving dispensaries, but yet prohibiting any kind of grow or distribution operation. If the city was against this on some kind of moral grounds, then it would be consistent to prohibit both. But to prohibit the second one, there's no logical explanation for it, and it's not friendly to business. I mean, what's the problem? I don't get it.
Thank you. City Manager Nicholas, and then we'll open it up for discussion. I'm sure we will have some.
And I'll address that question in my remarks. The Council has had a number of sessions in August and September on the subject of adult use of cannabis and the possibilities for it in the City of DeKalb. Plan Commission looked at this particular matter just last week and voted to recommend the Council's approval of the proposed amendments here. Just want to very quickly run down these amendments. They are in your background, but those looking in may not be familiar. So when we, if you approve this ordinance, henceforward, if you're talking about a cannabis business establishment, you're referring to both medical and recreational cannabis dispensaries. Establishments would have to receive a special use in the light commercial, general commercial, light industrial zoning districts. It would be a 250-foot setback to schools, daycare centers, nursery schools, preschools, academic buildings, or residence halls at NIU. The current tobacco setback, by the way, is 200 feet. Minimum separation of 1,500 feet between cannabis dispensaries, which is as directed in the state act. We would remove the requirement in the 2015 ordinance, which is still the law in DeKalb, that requires dispensaries to be in standalone buildings with Sally ports for people who are delivering product to come in. We would allow them multi-tenant commercial buildings as we do other commercial uses, allow signage as we would other commercial usage. We want to allow smoking within a dispensary. A limit of five dispensaries is proposed, and why five when some of the accounts of what might be coming in the next couple of years have painted a much larger picture of what might be happening statewide? But according to the State of Illinois, a total of 75 licenses for dispensing organizations will be issued by May 1, 2020. In our geographical area, which includes, of course, DeKalb County, and we're among the 10 counties north-central, northwest Illinois, we'll only get three licenses in the near term. So asking for five gives us a little bit of growth room. And obviously, this ordinance can be revised as time goes along. Why not the cannabis craft grower cultivation center, infuser, processor, transporter, and so forth, centers that are identified in the law? We have it on, the information we're getting from the State of Illinois and from other communities, that because either in veto session or in the first regular session of 2020, there's going to be more conversation about the details affecting the regulation of those other types of cannabis businesses that we thought we would wait and see what will happen there. That's our rationale for that, and I think it's appropriate.
I respect the three folks who spoke in favor of perhaps taking another look at item N for the cultivation centers, growing, infusing, processing, transporting, and medical cannabis. I certainly do. From what I hear our city manager saying, and from what I have read and discussed with a few folks, we could, in fact, pass this ordinance. And then at another time, depending on how the state talks and discusses this, we could amend the ordinance, we could bring that item N back for consideration. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, so you have the choice. You can try to embrace other types of cannabis dispensing or growing businesses with the possibility that the rules may change. And if you invite people in and you say, here are the rules, and then later on you say, well, the state has acted here, you're going to have to not do that. That's not a good place to be in. At this point, we'd be in a position to say, we will possibly entertain this in the future, and we'll wait for the state to refine their rules.
And I believe the interest that has been shown and indicated to us thus far has been in the dispensary arena, not in the growing or the cultivation or anything like that, that I'm aware of. Alderman Morris?
This feels like something capitalism can manage. This feels like something, if you're going to, you know, be a grower or a cultivation center, any of those types of businesses, and, I mean, if we know that the state is still hashing out exactly how to deal with this, there's no reason we can't just strike N entirely and just wait to address it until the state addresses it.
We could do that.
Yes.
Alderman Verbic?
I'll make that motion to strike N from the ordinance.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Morris, that we strike item N out of this first reading of this ordinance, 2019-069. Do we have any further discussion on this?
We were just having a quick discussion. Asking if there was a legal reason why we could leave this. And John, you can speak to this, but it may be because of, there may be interest, and we know there is interest in other parts of the state in these, one or several of these types of businesses. This basically puts on record, anybody can go to our website and see what are your rules, and take a look at it, and can see it rather than wonder by its absence if it's in play or not. I guess that'd be the only advantage, leaving it in.
Are you suggesting that our attorney is not in favor of us taking a vote on this amendment?
No, 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 no. Just said, here's the reason why you might want to leave it in.
I see, okay. Alderman Faver?
Because it sounds like at least two council members are in favor of it. Are you saying to change it from prohibited to permitted?
No. No, he was just saying, leave N in. That way, it's like a right.
It's a clear communication of where we stand, rather than letting people wonder.
Correct.
As a general rule in zoning, if something isn't permitted, either as a permitted use or special use, your first default response is, well, it's not allowed. So these uses, as are not really addressed at all, probably are not allowed under our zoning code anyway. But leaving it in would resolve that confusion at all, because you have specific languages. And taking it out, however, would ultimately leave the same result in that if it's not permitted or as a special use or as a permitted use, it would generally be considered to be prohibited.
Alderman Faver?
So I was going to, before the motion was made, I was going to say, if we left it the way it is, and tomorrow we get a call from someone who wants to set up a grow facility in the county or in DeKalb, we would consider that. We would, you know, encourage them to bring forth their plans, explain to us what they're going to do, and take that to planning and zoning, and we would look at amending this. But I don't know.
I think, my recommendation to you is to wait until after the legislature has reviewed this. If they take it up in the veto session, it's not absolutely certain. And if not, then in the spring session, which would be the end of June.
So because I'm not 100% clear on what the state has done, is it, have they, I know at one point we had, like in Rochelle, there is a grow facility for medicinal marijuana, and they had one in every district, I believe.
Some of this is a technical, some of this is the politics of it. So we have other states that were in advance of us. Colorado is one that's often noted, right? And one of the issues that Colorado faced early on, they've since remedied this to a large extent, was they didn't specify in great detail what the specs were for these growth centers. So, and were silent in some key aspects. So there were a lot of growth centers that were never really legal, and that's always a threat. But in this case, people thought they were operating legally, and they just weren't operating within a framework which the state later put in. There is concern in the House, some people who voted for this legislation, but somewhat reluctantly, that we haven't nailed the specifications or the framework for this. So in deference to that, the leadership in the House and the Senate have said, let's have some more conversation about this. And I think while they're talking, we should be listening and finding out where they're going to fall. And then we can come back. It's only six months, a little bit more than six months away. We haven't had, as the mayor said, any interest in this type of cannabis business, but dispensaries definitely, and I think the Council feels that we ought to proceed with the dispensaries at this time.
It may be of some benefit if I pass a little anecdotally what I've heard. When I did speak with a gentleman who owned a cannabis grow center some time ago. And what he told me was, his expectation was that there wouldn't be any more cultivation, Senator, you know, placed licenses issued in Illinois, because they already had enough, number one. And number two, there would be enough once these centers ramped up their production level to meet the demand, although he said that that may take a year or two before the current demand as of January 1 can be met by the existing cultivation centers. But that was his expectation. Now, again, he owns a center, so he obviously has a vital, unique interest that he's trying to protect. But that's, you know, that's the best information that I've been informed about as far as at least the cultivation centers.
It would appear to me that whether we vote on the original reading or to take a vote on the amendment, that we're still going to be in a position to be able to address any potential interest in cultivation, growing, et cetera. But having said that, Alderman, Fanouken?
Actually, Alderman Morris and Alderman Verbic, your intent of deleting this portion, what's your intent of deleting that portion? To make it an approved use?
Well, I have an alternative idea now that we've discussed this further.
What was your intent of that, though?
My intent was just to not prohibit it. So I think it's, you know, all of what the city attorney just mentioned is good and well, but it's not relevant when we're trying to be business friendly. So I would almost say, we suggest that we switch to say, instead of prohibited, perhaps say, will be permitted in accordance with state guidelines once they're established. Then we don't have to address this again in the future.
And then could we also include it as a special use under our zoning? I think that would clarify it quite a bit, then.
Right. Yeah, so I mean, I think the goal is just to continue to be business friendly, because we don't want to put it in our ordinance and have it say that it's prohibited, and hope that someone's bold enough to check with us and call the city and say, hey, what do you think about this? I think that's not at all what we expressed we were feeling in the first place. I thought we were open to all this.
Does that argument align with what you were thinking, Alderman Verbic?
Yeah, I'm more interested in sending a positive message up front, but I would also agree with your language.
Why don't we vote on this amendment?
Well, I'd...
Excuse me, Bill?
May I? If you could look for a minute from the standpoint of the enforcers, which would be the staff, and probably be me to start. We, right now, would be in a position where we'd have to explain to people, well, what can I do in these other three types of businesses? Infusers, cultivation, so forth. And I have to say, I really don't know, and I wouldn't want to recommend that you proceed until the state has ruled on this. And that's the best I could say to them. I couldn't say, yeah, please, y'all come, but just be, you know, you're taking a risk. We don't know if our, see, our rules, we can't be more restrictive, but we can add other things, special uses, things like that. If the state doesn't define going forward parameters for size, we could possibly do that. We can identify the zoning districts where we would allow them to be. So there are a few other criteria that I wouldn't be able to answer. At this point, what we do know pretty clearly is what is available if you want to do a dispensary. And as a medical dispensary grows into, so we're just asking here for about a six-month hiatus. It would certainly have to come back to you anyway. You'll have plenty of time to, as we do, see what's happening at the state level, and we'll bring it back to you for further action.
Alderman Morris?
Thank you. I think I'm already disappointed that we aren't going to be able to be selling, and I don't, maybe I'm confused at whether this is a state issue or just the way things panned out. But I'm already disappointed that we're not going to be able to offer recreational marijuana sales in January. So what that says to me is, we need to be more proactive with our planning and make sure that those plans are set in place so that people can... sure that those plans are set in place, so that people can know what to expect in advance. And if our ordinance spells it out clearly, that we just want you to keep in line with state regulations, then they know. Well, when the state says it, that's when you can know what the regulation's gonna be. But I don't want us to miss the opportunity to have the first, you know, one of these sorts of craft growers or whatever in the near vicinity, because we didn't want to be proactive and say in our ordinance, you know, that we welcome you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman, favor?
What I'm hearing is, if we were to allow this, and we were to get a grower in here, as, when we were first taking this out, under consideration, there was someone who came in and talked about a city they went to, and the smell, and, you know, how it was very apparent in the grow areas and things like that in the city. We don't have any specifications, I haven't seen any, but maybe they exist, on what is, how the air filtration is and things like that. We wouldn't have any idea on how to take care of any of that right now. So, we could put this up in a neighborhood, because we don't know. Do we put one in a neighborhood? Do we have to put it in an industrial park? We have to come up with all those specifications, and we don't have those right now. What if we say they can do it in downtown DeKalb, and the state says it has to be in an industrial park, or it has to be in certain industrial filtration and things like that? So, we don't know. I think is, what I'm hearing is, we don't know what the requirements are gonna be. That's why we won't have a dispensary opening until June, because they didn't know what their requirements were from the state, not from the city of DeKalb.
Exactly, and that's what I'm saying. In the very same sense that the state is going to naturally slow them down, we might as well say that we're ready to have them as soon as the state puts out their communication. And, I mean, didn't you guys do a tour of a facility, a grow facility recently?
I think we have done exactly that. This council has, very early on in the game, said that there was consensus that we want to move ahead with positive consideration of recreational cannabis. The state, then, at that point, says that they're only gonna do so many, there's so many districts within Illinois, we fall within one of those districts. What I hear you saying is that you want to do everything that we can as early on as possible, so that we are in that position to move forward, as we've said four months ago, five months ago, whatever it was.
Yeah.
Alderman McAdams?
I just wanted to point out that when the mayor and I toured the cultivation center, that the smell was extremely intense on the inside, but was not detected on the outside. So, that was our experience in Rochelle.
So, what I'm saying is, this way, if we do this, we will allow someone who wants to open one of these types of facilities to at least choose, oh, that's a community that's willing to welcome us, let's wait for the state guidelines. When they do, you know, they can have, you know, they can plan six different ways in the meantime, and then pull the trigger on the best one first, and fast, and then we reap the benefits.
So, I think we have two things going here. One is the ordinance and the law, and one is marketing. And we want to send that message, which we can do tomorrow by changing our website, just saying, you know, if we had the ordinance in hand tomorrow morning, we say, here are the rules. By the way, the council favors further consideration of X, Y, and Z. As soon as the state further defines and refines those rules, we will take that up. That sends a pretty positive message. Right now, we can't define what those rules will be, and it's hard in the body of an ordinance to say, we'll do this, but then not tell them how we're gonna do this. That was my only concern.
I think just saying, within keeping with state guidelines, and I understand the state may give us a range of guidelines.
Well, see, we have local guidelines, too. That's the whole point. The dispensaries are built on both state and local guidelines, so if you have no local guidelines, that's fine, but we will. We have to define the zoning, we have to define setbacks, we have to, you know, air, whatever it is, we get to do that. We can't just say we'll follow the state, which is gonna lead to the locals, those criteria.
Any further discussion? Alderman Verbic, are you still comfortable with your motion?
Yes.
And Alderman Morris, you're still comfortable with your motion, with your second to that motion, that we remove?
It was her motion, he seconded.
Oh, excuse me, was it your motion?
No, it was mine.
I thought it was Alderman Verbic's. Okay. Alderman Verbic, move that we remove item N out of this ordinance that we're considering for first reading. Alderman Morris seconded that motion. We've had several minutes of discussion regarding that. Why don't we vote on this motion first, see what it does, and then we should vote on the original motion, whether or not item N is included or not. Does that make sense? We prepared for the motion on the amendment. Roll call.
Favor. Morris.
Yes.
Fanouk.
No.
Smith.
No.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Five I, two N.
That amendment passes. Now, we are voting on.
Excuse me, question on the original amendment, if I may, please.
Yes, please.
On the original motion, rather. So, City Manager Nicholas, in the backup provided regarding the 250-foot buffer that you referred to in paragraph C of your narrative, the map that's provided includes most of the NIU campus as an allowed area, where with the narrative, that would not be part of that.
We're trying, yeah, the actual language uses the location of the buildings, not just the touch to the yard area.
Well, I understand that, but that's my point, though, it shows most of campus as a permitted area, including all the residence hall areas, most all of the academic buildings as a permitted area, and the map that's been provided. So, maybe before second reading in two weeks, that map could be reviewed.
Yeah, revise it.
Thank you.
Would you refresh for the benefit of the council?
Sure.
What you and Bill just agreed on?
And the more, and the more complete backup material that can be downloaded from the city's website.
Right.
There's three maps, allowed areas for cannabis. The one that includes a 250-foot buffer, the allowed area includes almost all the NIU campus, where if, as the narrative says, a 250-foot setback to school, daycare centers, nursery, academic buildings, or residence halls at NIU. So, the narrative is a lot different from what the map shows us.
Bill's correct. About two months ago, when we started the conversation, we showed the council three or four different maps. One showed 1,000-foot separation, 500, 250, 200, 100, five of them, I guess. And the 250 was still in there, and we should have taken it out, because we had some further conversation with the administration at NIU, and they had suggested tying it to the separation from the buildings rather than.
Sorry, though, but my point is that the map should be redone prior to the second reading. Thank you.
We'll do it.
So, I think we can go ahead and pass this on first reading, bring it back second reading at our next meeting with a more correct alignment, if you will, Alderman Fanouk in between the map and the verbiage in the ordinance. And that's item C under that ordinance. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, a second that we move forward with the original ordinance, which now does not include item N. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Fanouk.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That ordinance is approved on first reading as amended. Okay, moving right along to item number two, ordinance 2019-070, amending ordinance 2006-107, and ordinance 2006-109, to accommodate an approximately 1,222,400 square-foot food distribution center, and a 466,560 square-foot food packaging center for property located between Route 23, Gerler Road, Kriego Road, and I-88, Chicago West Business Center, DeKalb 343 LLC. Motion, please.
So moved, seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Fanouk, and seconded by Alderman McAdams. We have one person who would like to speak to this item. I believe this is our last speaker from the floor tonight, once again, Steve Capitan.
I have another question. Was the grading permit based on the current plan and plot, or on the proposed amended version? So, I would, since the council is on a roll to pass this tonight, it seems to me, I would appreciate it if that question was answered, if the council isn't willing to let the process go forward in a more orderly fashion, at least have that question answered. Also, too, in the memo, in the deep background, in the transportation road improvements access section, it mentions that an amendment to the agreement is needed to allow the proposed five private access points along Gerler Road for the first phase. The site plan map also shows 10 access points on Gerler Road upon full buildout. Committing to 10 access points on Gerler Road between Route 23, which is South Fourth Street, and Kriego Road ensures that Gerler Road will have no chance of becoming the final leg of the Peace Road bypass that runs from the north of Sycamore Road at Peace Road at Plankton 23, snaking between the two cities, to ending south of the tollway at Gerler Road on the south side of DeKalb. At some point in the future, as development occurs south of the tollway, this is a major factor, land will have to be then acquired for right-of-way, instead of using Gerler Road to link up with Route 23, south of DeKalb. This will incur greater cost. Has the county been consulted about this impact, since it would be involving the county as well? Has the city considered what those additional costs would be? Then if the city council decides it's worth the cost to welcome this proposal, proposed amendment, then the city would be acting in the public interest. But due deliberation is what needs to occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We've had considerable public input on this tonight, most of all which was held during the public hearing. I appreciate Mr. Capitan's additional comments. Alderman, or, excuse me, City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Plan Commission and the council have seen essentially the same background information and the deep background, also a little more than usual in the way of the manager's summary. I don't intend to repeat it all. We're looking at an area of about 106 acres, which is basically the middle third of the Chicago West Business Park, as it was annexed and zoned and platted back in 2006. And in answer to Steve's question, good question, what the mass grading is doing is addressing the uses that you've seen depicted on the TVs here tonight, not the, both the industrial uses and the limited commercial and residential uses that were in the 2006 plan, which was anticipating residential growth south of Gerler and so forth. Those uses are not envisioned for this site any longer. The Gerler Road impacts are a key part of the staff discussions that occurred to this point, and also discussions at the Plan Commission level, and happy to answer any of those questions. I think the council's aware that ultimately, as we've been working with the county and with the DeKalb Township and the state of Illinois, we're looking at ultimately upgrading Gerler Road to a three-lane section, much like Fairview Drive, which serves a large industrial park, as you know, Park 88. And we believe that the plan for access, which is primarily to focus access to Chicago West, basically in the middle of those properties that are shown in the white, which are the first phase, and first and second phases, will direct the bulk of the traffic in and out of there, but having some access parts for the two future uses that may be installed on the west and on the east of this center, 106 acres, is essential. There's be some access to lots, it's also a part of our city code, and two lots, I believe, in each, to each was anticipated. So, the, and I will say, the concerns of the residents who spoke tonight, and also many of the same spoke on Wednesday night last week to the Plan Commission, are legitimate concerns, have been taken into account by Mr. Kozinski in behalf of the 343 LLC, and the city will see that those concerns are addressed. On the stormwater runoff side, as was pointed out earlier in the public hearing, right now, we have 343 acres of uncontrolled runoff, and some of that goes to the northwest, a good deal of it does, and some of it goes down to the ditches on 23 and Gerler Road, and also eastward. And according to our ordinances, our UDO, which has a pretty stiff, the stiffest in the county, stormwater runoff requirements, that has to be controlled and then released after the flood stage, and at a rate that will not impact downstream properties. That's a requirement, that's not a wish, it's not a maybe, it's a requirement. And so, that's another thing in addition to roadway concerns. As I pointed out in the background, when a large area like this is to be developed, there are these concerns, there are other concerns, larger economic ones that impact the community, and were addressed as we were talking in the committee, the whole meeting about the future of DeKalb and what will happen, and we can't escape attending to the fact that, for the first time in at least a generation, we're looking at a large development that will also have career jobs, and not just 20, or 30, or 40, or 500, but many more than that. And what does that mean? There'll be a range, certainly, of jobs, and be a range between the manufacturing and distribution centers of pay per job and so forth. We don't control that, but in the intergovernmental agreement that we'll do with the company with respect to incentives, we can define what the floor will be, and we have proposed that, and that particular proposal is circulating with the company. So, we, nothing's been signed yet. This is that delicate time when we are trying to be good stewards and custodians of public welfare, and as Carolyn said earlier. And as Carolyn said earlier, we're trying to, we're trying to show people that we welcome them. So, I have confidence in our ordinances and regulations, and, and in the people that enforce them, and I have confidence in the direction of the council, which is to try to grow our community and diversify our economic base, and I believe this goes a long way toward that. So, we recommend your approval of the Plan Commission recommendation from last Wednesday to approve this amendment to the original annexation agreement and preliminary plan. I hasten to point out that this isn't your last sitting. If there's to be another amendment to the annexation agreement, then that's done through a public hearing, again, at the Plan Commission level, and then back to you. And so it will go. We have done that with Park 88. Those of you who have been around and have seen what we've done, we just recently did a number of amendments to that annexation agreement, and prior to that, there were several before, and, and there may be some more again. We have to be nimble, and we have to be aware of things as they change in our mind, not just in the company's mind, and what we need. So, I have confidence in that as well.
Thank you, City Manager Nicholas. This council, as a public body, certainly knows, I think, better than, than many, and I would, I would just indicate to the public that, you know, not only has this been run by city council and planning and zoning, but, you know, all of our taxing bodies that we've gotten involved in this have, have supported this. Unanimous vote at the county board level. So, and as Bill says, we need this, and we need approval of this, in my opinion. If things need to be amended, et cetera, down the pike, as you suggest, Bill, this council certainly should be postured to do that. Alderman Fanouken.
I almost forgot, did you, Jerry?
No, no, I'd never forget you, Bill, so.
Most you know, I'm the senior member of this council, and I've spoke with the rest of the council. So, on behalf of this council, I want to make it very clear, speaking of these corporations that are considering coming here, we want you to locate here. We welcome you with open arms. I think you'll find a DeKalb, in the city of DeKalb, the county of DeKalb, an outstanding location for your businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Fanouken. Now, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That motion passes on first reading. Does any council member want to waive second reading and approve the ordinance?
I'd like to move that we waive second reading and approve.
I second that motion.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken and seconded by Alderman McAdams that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you. That ordinance is approved as presented. Okay, we move along now to reports and communications. Each member of our city council has an opportunity to report, and I'd like to start with our first ward, Alderman Carolyn Morris.
Thanks. So I had a, I had a ward meeting this past week. It was not largely attended, but those who did attend mentioned concerns ranging from the water, as Mark Charvat pointed out, water bills going up, they're concerned about that. Parking issues being resolved are still something that they want closure on, but I've spoken to the city manager about that, and he had instantaneous feedback from me. Trying to think if there's anything else important. Going first is hard. That's, that's all I've got right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Morris. And thank you, once again, for holding, holding an Aldermanic ward meeting. I appreciate it. Alderman Fanouken.
I just want to comment, I'm glad to see that we are getting going on the budget process and moving forward. I'm looking forward to our activities over the next six weeks as we move forward and complete the 2020 budget.
Alderman Smith.
No report.
Alderman McAdams.
We are having a ward meeting for the fifth ward at 6:30 PM this Friday, November 1st, at French Toast Pancake House Restaurant at 831 South Fourth Street in DeKalb. We're helping a fifth ward resident, restaurant get out the word about their new Friday night fish fry, so please join us from 6:30 until 8:00 PM.
Alderman Verbic.
DeKalb Tenants Association, they're meeting tomorrow at 900 Normal, Normal Road at 6:00 PM. It's a free event, come and enjoy snacks and meet renters organizing for tenants' rights.
Alderman Favor.
No report.
Again, I'd like to reiterate that I did have a chance to interview five folks who were interested in our fourth Aldermanic position. I have made a decision on that, and will move that name forward for your approval, and hopefully that subsequent to swearing in that evening for our fourth ward Alderman. A quick status on the city staff follow-up with those legislative offices with whom I visited in Washington DC earlier this month. Transit, airport, and the Community Gardens Food Hub will all be communicating with various legislative staffers and departments, such as the federal administration, Aeronautics Administration, FAA, and the Department of Transportation over the next several weeks. Because we want people who are dealing with what we're looking for with those who may help us to make it happen. Particularly important would be the coordination with Patty Daly, with whom this council approved a consulting agreement at our last meeting. I'm especially optimistic that we have initiated a city-to-federal pipeline that will result in some significant financial results. As our Public Works crews prepare for leaf collection starting today and for the winter's onset, we also want to call attention to the need for assistance to our underserved population. There will be a host of winter clothing drives, food collections, other community outreach programs such as these. I'd encourage all of us to answer the call of those who need this assistance in the days and the months ahead. This Thursday is Halloween in the city of DeKalb, and our official trick-or-treat hours are from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And finally, today began the beginning of our new Route 9 bus route, which goes a large loop with particular emphasis on Fairview Drive, along the four distribution centers there, trying to get more people down there who may interview, who may be working down there. Over the next several months, we'll be working with a number of our departments and others in building the new bicycle pathway along Fairview Drive. So you're going to, we're going to see a lot of activity down there, a really, really positive activity. That concludes my report. City Clerk Fazekas.
Thank you. No report today.
City Manager Nicholas.
No report.
Any others? If not, we will not be holding an executive session tonight. There is no need to, to hold an executive session. With that having been said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting of the DeKalb City Council.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Smith, that we adjourn this meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.